I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father.
Counselman Higgs.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day that has not been seen before, Lord. Ask that you bless all the haters and all those to despise and say all matter evil, because Lord God, I know you're able to keep me in spite of it all, Lord. Ask that you bless each and every individual that's assembled here in your name, Jesus. Ask that you give us grace and mercy and understanding so that the tasks that is set before us are done decent and in order. Ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. I give you all the glory and the praise and the honor for your worthy, Lord. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Roll call.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Markovich.
Here. Nine present and zero absent. Reading and amendments, Councilman Spitali.
President, the most accepted amendment from June 10th, 2019 to be placed on file, please.
Most by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, that the minutes be placed on file, any discussion?
Correction, Councilman Mark.
Councilman Higgs.
You said second by who?
Councilman Higgs.
I didn't second that.
I didn't.
Mosted by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Approval of claims, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the claims, beginning with claims dated 6/10/19, ending with claims dated 6/19/19. Claim 3289 through claim 3589 inclusive in the amount of $3,516,391.21.
Mosted by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vines, for approval of claims as stated.
Nine in favor, zero absent. Item five, public hearings. We have four public hearings. Carmen, item A.
1911, an ordinance to create Fund 242 and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund for 2019.
Read them all.
Read them all.
1913, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2019. 1915, an ordinance to approve additional appropriations. 1916, an ordinance to appropriate new funds to the operating balance for the Hammond Sanitary District's Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund 8280 and Special Sanitary General Fund
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
C and D ordinance 1915 and 1916 are getting introduced tonight. These were advertised and because of the amount of time that they have to be advertised because they pertain to the DLGF is why we're having a public hearing and it hasn't been introduced yet, but these will be introduced tonight and explained. If they want, if you want an explanation now. Basically, 1915 is an ordinance that, let me get the paper here. It restores $7,464,438 to the general fund and 1,93,308 is restored to the parks budget to the levels we approved when we passed the budget. What happens is the DLGF, after the budget gets submitted, goes in and makes cuts based on estimates they make at the time. And those estimates constantly change. There's no additional tax to the residents on this and basically all we're doing is we're restoring what the DLGF said we had to cut because when the estimates came in, it came back that the budget was, that we approved, meets the requirements of the Department of Local Government and Finance. And on 1916, it's the same thing with the sanitary district, basically. It's a cash balance that est, the estimated cash balance was at zero when we prepared the 2019 budget and the actual cash balance was $1,577,396. So, we're just restoring what they said was zero. And the DLGF estimated the circuit breaker credit at 1.585,485 and the actual DLGF's, the actual payment was $1,054,281. So, we're restoring $531,204, which we budgeted for, but the DLGF, at the time we passed the budget, said it had to be cut. It happens pretty much through county government all the time. It's the same thing. It's, they base what our budget should be based on estimates, sometimes 18 months out. But it came back that we don't have to cut this and we're just restoring it.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of or against?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs?
I guess my question would be to Heather in regards to restoring the budget. Was there a shortfall in any of these?
Was there a shortfall?
Right.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you mean by that.
In regards to the money that was allocated additionally, was there a shortfall? Because they saying that they're, Councilman Warple was saying it's being restored to what the numbers were.
A lot of this had to do with original estimates for the circuit breakers. That when we, the DLGF certified our budget, they used much higher numbers built in based upon the projections at the time. Those go through a certification process, the updated numbers were released in May. And so, basically, instead of losing those dollars to circuit breaker losses, we can apply them to the budget. So, we're just bringing it back to the levels that you all approved last fall. They moved up their budget calendar last year. So, hopefully, some of these timing issues will be sorted out for this year's budget. I know it really did affect the estimates and the numbers we were receiving.
So, for 2020, when is the budget inspected to be?
Our budget timeframe is still the same timeline. They just adjusted what the county has to do and some of the numbers they have to give us requires quite a bit of work that goes into it. So, coordinating that to get all of those, the different entities and their circuit breaker estimates together, hopefully, they'll have that information in time for us to go through our normal budget cycle. We typically, it has to be approved by November 1st of every year. We typically try to get it done earlier than that. So, last year, we were in October. So, typically, we're aiming for a September adoption date. We're already getting started on some of the internal process that we have to go through before we even come to the council.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I think this council will recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember if it was after January or just before, we get a $1 million budget reduction?
It was before. So, that was part of this issue as well. There's a certain date when we do budget reductions that have to be, they have to be approved by the DLGF by a certain date in the year. We did that timely. However, due to their new budget calendar, they certified, excuse me, our budget order before they accepted our budget reduction. So, those numbers didn't get placed into the budget. So, that was part of the amount of money you see here to restore because we know we cut that money. So, it was cash balance available to be used for the next year's budget.
But basically, the budget reduction was to meet DLGF estimates, correct?
That budget reduction was in order to support a fully balanced budget for 2019. So, we knew that we were going to come in a little bit lower than originally budgeted for our insurance program specifically. We have to be kind of cautious there, but we were hopeful that we would be able to reduce it. We were. And so, we wanted to be able to apply those funds to the 2019 budget so we didn't have to ask for additional transfer dollars of gaming revenue. We really tried to keep it at that 12.5 number that we discussed during the budget process.
Any other questions? Again, anybody wish to speak in favor of or against the public hearings for item A, B, C, or D? Anyone wish to speak in favor of or against public hearings? Anyone wish to speak in favor of or against the public hearings? Public hearings closed. Communications.
Oh, are you looking at me, right?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, we received a communication that Dr. Jones resigned from the College Bound Exemption Board and that is a council appointment. So, I guess, are we open for suggestions on who our council appointment would be?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
In my tenure of being on the council, I've never seen it actually being announced on the council floor. So, what's the big issue tonight? That's something that could be dealt with later and then if someone's interested, of course, but I don't see a need for announcing it at this point. It hasn't been done in 16 years.
Well.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
It was a communication we received and on my agenda, it says we're on communications.
So, anybody interested in being on a, be a council's appointment for the Exceptions Committee for College Bound, there is an opening. If you have any, want to get involved in it or would be considered, you can submit a resume or whatever to the City Council Secretary.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I have suggestions, but I'll keep it to myself tonight. Moving right along.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I have suggestions, but I'll keep it to myself.
Put them in writing or whatever, submit it to the council.
Certainly. There's so many people out there that's interested in the city of Hammond, but I don't see them in the audience tonight. Wow, it's awesome, isn't it?
Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 1911 and 1913.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, as I do at every council meeting, I'd like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, June 25th, the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet at the American Legion on Goslin beginning at 6:30 PM. That's always a very informative meeting about some of the ongoings in the neighborhood, not only from a crime standpoint, but from different projects and everything up in, at that end of town. So, if you live in the Pulaski Park area, please come out. You will find out a lot of information about your neighborhood. And even if you don't live in the neighborhood, it's a great opportunity to hear some of the things that are going on throughout the city. And then, on Tuesday, July 2nd, the Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue, beginning at 6:30 PM. That's right across the street from the historic Harrison Park. This is a relatively revamped crime watch group and they've had some great speakers there. A lot of the people from the neighborhood are coming out and expressing their concerns and learning about things that are going on in their neighborhood. So, I suggest that anybody who is interested in learning what's going on, not only in that neck of the woods, but also citywide, I recommend that you attend a community or crime watch meeting because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess I have a question seeing that crime watch is doing so much in our great city. Recently, in my district, someone was murdered or whatever happened. I'm not totally sure, but we haven't heard anything about it, not even in the newspaper. And I don't see anyone from the Times out in the audience this evening, but certainly that is important and it's not about me, it's about us. So, I'm trying to figure out where's the us because I haven't heard anything about this young man and his, him being killed in my district. So, if you can find out some information, I would greatly appreciate it.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Ordinance is for third and final passage. Carmen.
1911, an ordinance to create Fund 242 and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund for 2019.
Mr. President. Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 1911.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Higgs for final passage and adoption of 1911. Any discussion? Councilman Spitali.
This is from the Hammond Police Department. It's called Stop Armed Violation Enforcement. We've all seen it on TV where the bus puts the arm down and some people have gone around and actually killed some people. This is a grant that the Hammond Police Department is asking for $8,000 to work through this. It's the first time they had the opportunity to get this grant. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing that this is the first time this grant is being implemented in our city, I think it's a great idea and certainly I applaud the efforts of the Hammond Police Department. So, seeing the Times does not hear, the Post is. Can you please make sure you put that in the paper as well? Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
1913, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2019.
Mr. President. Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 1913.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Higgs for final passage and adoption of 1913. Any discussion? Councilman Spitali.
This is the CDBG funds. There was an addition to the youth basketball program that was still in existence, but we turned it over to Jim Talon for the Hessville Hoops. They've been in, Mr. and Mrs. have been in charge of this for 19 years. There's been 400 to 500 youth, maybe somebody who's out there participated in it, ages five to 15. 90% of it are the Hammond children, but also to the Robert Stale and lighting don't, they don't have those programs and they're also involved with it also. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, nine in favor, zero absence. Carmen, item C. Or, I'm sorry. We just did 1913, so that's, that's final for third and final? That's all of them? Okay. Item number nine, introductions of ordinances.
1915, an ordinance to approve additional appropriations.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for passage on first and second reading, council as a whole, on July 8th at 5:15 PM. And the public hearing was this afternoon and again, this.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, seconded by Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
We discussed this.
We're doing a public hearing, didn't set on?
We just had a public hearing.
Ready to go, thank you. Carmen, next item.
Vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
1916, an ordinance to appropriate new funds to the operating balance for the Hammond Sanitary District's Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund 8280 and Special Sanitary General Fund 8201.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading and also move to council as a whole on July 8th at 5:15 PM. Second.
Mosted by Councilman Warple, seconded by Councilman Higgs for 1916, for first and second reading. Public, we had the public hearing and refer to council as a whole. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. That concludes the introduction of ordinances. Item 10, resolutions. Carmen.
19R-16, a resolution of the Hammond City Council approving certain Form CF1s as filed with the Hammond Council of the City of Hammond as the designating body by applicants previously approved for economic revitalization area deductions from assessed value pursuant to Indiana Code.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for passage of resolution 19R-16, ISO move.
Mosted by Councilman Higgs, seconded by Councilman Emerson for final passage and adoption of 19R-16. And we have discussion and I would refer to Ann Anderson to come in and introduce the different companies that are asking for this tax abatement.
Good evening, council, thank you. As you know, tax abatements are one of the tool that Hammond has to incentivize projects and companies looking to relocate and expand in Hammond. And this evening is their annual compliance of statement of benefits that need review and approval by the council. We have five of the companies here and representatives, I'd like to ask them to come on up. They could state their name, their name of the company and what their company does in
Good evening. My name's Brian Enright. I'm Chief Financial Officer for Corellis Roofing. We are a roofing contractor here in Hammond.
I need a roof. Just joking.
I'm Jean Robbins, President of Munster Steel. We fabricate structural steel for buildings and bridges in Indiana and Illinois, Michigan and Wisconsin for the most part, but we do work all over the country.
Good evening, council. My name is Donald Santa Catarina. I'm the Principal of Crow Sand Development. We are the developers and operators of the project just on the south side of the highway between Kennedy and Klein. And we're here today on approval of our continued resolution.
Good evening. I'm Peter Fitzsimmons, the VP at American Stair. We're located at 3510 Calumet and we manufacture steel, stairs and railing and, and yeah.
So, these are examples of projects that would not have been able to come and locate in Hammond if it not for these tax abatements. And Corellis Roofing had expanded beyond their boundaries and they would not have been able to expand in Hammond without this tax abatement, they would have had to move.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I want to personally say thank you for investing in our city and continuing to make our city a better place for the residents and I really appreciate your efforts in being a part of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President. Councilman Kelwinski.
I'd like to ask American Stairs a couple of questions. How many shifts are you running right now?
We just started our third shift, so we're running 24 hours a day now.
And I know you had a sign out for about a month regarding new hiring, all positions. What came of that?
Actually, we were pretty successful. We had quite a bit of walk-up traffic in general, but where we struggled a little bit was we were trying to find some qualified welders, but we've since sort of reached out to local trade schools in the area and sort of working with them to get sort of new graduates in directly from, from, you know, their teaching facilities, if you will. But it's been, it's been surprisingly efficient just actually, just having a sign out in front, like the traffic on Calumet must be heavy enough that it's brought in quite a few people, so.
Along that corridor, you know, you have the ditch.
Mm-hmm.
Where the water travels and that's pretty much in my district, a lot of that. And I'm asking companies to help with keeping the.
Sure.
Vegetation down along the ditch line. It makes your business more presentable, it makes the whole street look more presentable. So, I'm just asking everybody to take.
Sure.
Make a hand in that.
I'm sure that's something we can do. Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else?
That's it.
Sure.
Also, Munster Steel.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing over there?
We just renegotiated our union contract. We have another three-year contract. We actually switched to four 10s, so our extra overtime is now on Friday so that everybody can still have a two-day weekend.
And how many shifts are you right now?
We are running one full shift and then we have a skeleton crew for a second shift.
And do you know the numbers when you were in Munster versus the Munsters you have, the numbers you have now in Hammond?
I believe we've added five new employees since we moved.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I have a question for Munster Steel lady.
I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but.
It's Jean.
You're in the second district and you know, having a problem with these overpasses, Holman Avenue, Calumet and they don't have these guardrails pedestrian, over the pedestrian sidewalk. You guys do that?
Guardrail work? No, that's more of a miscellaneous fabricator type work, but we'd be happy to look at it if you had plans.
The state is, I understand the state is in charge of those bridges, but they seem to put those guardrails everywhere else except in over the Hammond overpasses. The one on Holman Avenue, there's a lot of senior citizens that go by there and some of them are terrified because of the incoming traffic.
I could, I can imagine.
I'm gonna look into that, so I might be talking to you in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Corellis Roofing's in the fifth district and I just want to say that I'm so glad they stayed there. They've got a university there, I understand, for roofers and.
I'm so glad they stayed there, they've got a university there, I understand, for roofers and everything, and, um, as far as keeping up with their commitments to the city, I think they've done a fantastic job. They've donated materials and time to the Vipers Program in the building they do, and I think they've gone above and beyond what their agreement is. And as far as the other one in my district, the Hammond Hospitality, that the gentleman's representing here, um, I get people tell me all the time what a great job I did on that development over there, and I say thank you, so, thanks for being in the district, I had nothing to do with it. You're the Hammond Hospitality on the Carlson Drive, or, nope, wrong one then, sorry, but I'll say that about them anyway. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, my question to Corellus Roofing, how many years have you been in Hammond totally? It's like a household name here.
Yeah, sixty-one years now.
And you said there was five, there's only four right there, who's not here now?
Hampton Inn and Suites, the one that Councilman Warple was referencing, they are stuck in traffic on their way from Indianapolis, so they won't be able to make it.
I had a senior moment.
Want to text them and tell, turn around and come back, or what?
We already did.
And then, uh, John Maranello?
That's, uh, John Maranello, he's in our, uh, he's in the Crow Sand Business Park.
Okay, with Crow Sand?
Represent him, he has the, uh, the Iris Company that's there, they employ about thirty-five people. They're in the Crow Sand Business Park, seventy-nine fifteen Maryland.
I knew he was in the fifth. It's 'cause you weren't a mailman.
Did I take care of everything, Ed?
Inspector.
Thank you.
Thank you again, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not on here. Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we heard from, uh, all the individuals that are looking for the tax abatement. Is there any further discussion on nineteen R dash sixteen? Any further discussion on nineteen R dash sixteen? Roll call.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent. Any other new and unfinished business? I'm sorry, any, any other resolutions? Carmen, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, item eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules to bring out Resolution number eighteen R seventeen.
Second.
I mean nineteen R seventeen.
Uh, what did I say?
Eighteen.
I'm sorry, yes, nineteen R dash.
I second that, too.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Warple, for suspension of the rules to bring out, uh, for suspension of the rules. Any discussion? Discussion? Discussion?
Um, Mr. President. Uh, uh, yes, this is for final passage of this resolution, uh, the resolution does need to be passed this evening. Uh, failure to pass this resolution would allow the governor to, uh, appoint, uh, someone to serve on this board.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Can, Carmen, can you please read the resolution, so we can move forward?
Don't we have to vote on, uh?
For hold of suspension. We're gonna have suspension of the rules, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Carmen?
Nineteen R seventeen, a resolution reappointing Raymundo Garcia to the Lake County South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, y, yes, I move for final passage of nineteen R dash seventeen to reappoint Raymundo Garcia to the South Shore Convention and Visitors, uh, Visitors Authority. He has already served two terms, and, uh, um, this term would begin, uh, July first going through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by.
Me.
Councilwoman Warple. For passage of Resolution nineteen R dash seventeen, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I won't make Carmen read it, I'll read it, whereas the Hammond Count, Common Council has by statute ICS six dash nine dash two dash three, a reappointment of the Lake County South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority, and whereas a vacancy will exist by virtue of an expired three-year term, and the Hammond Common Council wishes to reappoint restaurant operator Raymundo Garcia to that vacancy, and whereas Raymundo Garcia, when reappointed, will hold this position until his term expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and, now here's the important part, now therefore it be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond as follows, that Raymundo Garcia is appointed to serve as the Hammond Common Council's reappointment to the Lake County South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority, and is in all respects appointed by the Hammond Common Council of the City of Hammond. Resolve this day, then there's a line, day of another line, twenty-nineteen. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Warple. You're welcome, sir.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I make a motion to, uh, uh, return to, I guess, the regular order of business.
Second. Most by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Kelwinski. To go back to the regular order of business, being new and unfinished business, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and finished business, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, we have one person here, Daniel Leone, forty-five twenty Torrance Avenue.
Hi, my name is Daniel Leone, I live at forty-five twenty Torrance Avenue, and I have lived there for twenty-three years. I have some photos that I wanted to give the council, including my Councilman Kelwinski. So let me describe what you're looking at, the forty-fifth hundred block of Torrance Avenue has seen no repairs in the last twenty-three years since I lived there. The lack of proper drains have caused so much damage to the street, and has created huge potholes along the curb, which is deteriorating and causing damage to the cars that park there. The only lamppost on the block faces a business with, the address is on Goslin, and my mom is permanently disabled and had to install a front light fixture because it's dark outside on that street at night. We've had problems with our cars getting broken into, and because the street is so narrow, we've had hidden runs happen to our cars on this street before. Water builds up on the sidewalk, and it doesn't go away because the only drain we have is above the street line, and water doesn't flow to it. I know there are plans for a bike path on this street, but we've been trying to bring your attention, Councilman, to the street that is in real bad shape. We made reports on the See Click Fix app, which brings me to this. Councilman Kelwinski, how does a person who work a third, uh, shift and cannot attend these council meetings get in touch with you? You have not answered your phone listed on the Go Hammond website once, and you don't have an email, so your constituents can email you. And your voicemail has been full for the last two months. So I know because my neighbors and I have called you messages, about ten people in total, and you still have not listened to them. The Go Hammond City, the council page states that the council members participate in commission meetings to assure that the rights of people are protected, so why do you refuse, as councilmen, to listen and answer your phone calls to your constituents? During the previous council meeting, there was a business owner here who was telling and pleading with this council that her business was taking a hit because of the recent closure of Boy Scout Road. And rather you, sir, you said absolutely nothing to this person who is in your district. Councilman Higgs was the only person to come up and say anything, and yet you have no problem when the mayor wants to use your address to make one of his points. Why do you refuse to acknowledge the concerns of this business owner? And a good councilman would have acknowledged and sympath, and sympathized with their concerns, but you, Councilman, you stood quiet. I had to call off work to get here, I don't think you guys understand, I want this council to, to understand. There are real people who work third shift, six P.M. to five-thirty A.M., and as you all know, we don't receive benefits. As a recent college graduate, I don't get paid time off. Why is there no sympathy for these people who have called and tried to get in contact with you, and real, and talk about real issues that are affecting our district? And why should I risk, why should I risk losing my job in order to be here if you can't do yours? I hope you can start doing the job you get a pay check to do, and respond to each and every one of the people that have tried to get ahold of you, and have left you messages. After I reported my street issues to the See Click Fix apps, you sent Jonathan from the Engineering Department and tried to talk to us. He said you aren't an engineer, but we didn't call the Engineering Department, we called you, our councilman. Both the forty-fifth hundred block and the forty-six hundred block of Torrance were repaired with new lamps, intact curbs, drained seven years ago, but ours was skipped. Why? Is there no systematic way in which you update your streets of Hammond? When I asked Jonathan from Engineering, after you sent him to my home, he had said that both the first and second district councilmen thought that our street was, was each other's district. The forty-fifth hundred block of Torrance Avenue is your district, sir, and it's in bad shape, as you can see from all the pictures that I just gave you. When the other side of Torrance Avenue in District One was fixed, they did not go all the way down the road, why? Please come out and inspect the street for yourself like we have asked you multiple times to do. Please do a better job of handling your voicemails and the way you respond to your constituents, because the District One deserves a councilman that is responsive and does his job here, even in the council meetings, responding to the business owners that have pleaded with you to try to save Boy Scout Road, you said nothing. I know that Hammond is trying to get more people to come and live in the city, given all the projects you guys have brought here today, but how do you expect more people to move to our district when we've given them a councilman that doesn't take their phone calls? Councilman Torres, you are friends with Wilma Vasquez, the principal of my old elementary school, Lincoln, your wife is, at least, you can speak to her character. How would it look if concerned parents were calling the, her office for months, and she would not answer her phone and talk to these parents, or even allow their, uh, constituents to leave a voicemail to get in touch with you? Will you, will you do better? What's going on? What, what, what's the response?
Uh, are you finished, sir?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, we're not responding to people here.
No, but I, I, I understand that. I'm not gonna respond to that, I, I will respond when I get the opportunity to respond to something.
Well, we're under public expression.
Right, you have any other people?
Well, yeah, we've got people here.
Okay.
George Stoya?
George Stoya, Robert Seale. Um, you know, I, I, while, while I la, uh, laud, uh, the intentions, I guess, of the councilman in the first district and the mayor with respect to Boy Scout Road, I have some serious misgivings about his usage of, uh, the Philburn case that he cited on the radio with respect to interstate commerce and the scope of his application. Uh, from when I read of the Philburn case, he argued that it, that it was rather arbitrary, and according to the criteria that I've read so far, just derived from Google, uh, it's not arbitrary. And Hammond may very well be exposed to some serious risk, not only on the interstate commerce front, but there are other issues that I don't want to raise here. Uh, uh, maybe a letter would do, I don't know, but, uh, I just think, uh, the council needs to really look at the risk of, uh, exposure to liability with respect to Luke Oil. Um, that's serious, and that road, uh, does, uh, there is a substantial, there seems to be, I think, I think you can make an argument, that the substantial economic effect of shutting down that road is, uh, enough to justify the application of, uh, federal law over that state road, and that's scary. Uh, 'cause, uh, bear in mind that, uh, it doesn't mean that state law doesn't, uh, uh, have any effect, it's just that both operate concurrently. And somebody, we're gonna be exposed to some serious liability, conceivably. And I would hope that this council, uh, authorize or instruct, uh, uh, its attorney to do some serious research on this, 'cause, uh, there's more than one issue, it's not just interstate commerce, there's other things at play here. And somebody better get on the ball here, 'cause, like I said, while it's, all the good intentions are there, it's the reality is, you know, that's what you're but up against, that's just the limits on those intentions, anyway.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion to go back to regular order of business, ISO move.
Most by Councilman, um, Higgs.
Mr. President, I believe we have another.
Do you want to speak under public expression?
Sure.
Oh, come on in then. Your name and address, please.
My name's Paul Marciniak, forty-seven hundred block of Torrance. I appreciate the young man.
Address, please.
Four seven one one Torrance. I appreciate the young man who got up here and spoke. When I called, uh, three councilmen, they did return my calls and have.
You did not leave a phone number, sir.
Wait, 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 you didn't finish my.
Well, I'm just saying.
You gotta listen.
Point of order.
You know.
When I called my council people.
Hold on, please, okay? This is public expression, we're gonna let you speak. But you know what, people are gonna make accusations and everything, yes, you called.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Bob, don't go into that.
Sir, say. Go ahead and speak, sir. Thank you, when I called three councilmen and left my phone number, I got returned calls. And I want to say thank you to, uh, Pete Torres, and Dave, and Janet, for returning my calls promptly. And more than one returned call from at least two of them. And extensive discussions, which I ver, I appreciate very much. And I realize I'm I called Scott, too? Yeah, I called, I talked to Scott, too, four, and there was a fifth person I talked to, who was Susan?
That's the secretary.
Twice, okay? So.
Just saying thank you.
Okay, what brings me here is because on one of my rare days off, where I get to be at my house during the day for a small amount of time, and catch up with my own cleaning and my own housework, I hear some chainsaws outside, and I don't think much of it, maybe some tree pruning now. Then I see a guy hacking a tree out in front of the parkway right in front of the house, so I have to go out and confront, of course, I'm here too late. I found that out after extensive discussions with, uh, these four council people here, and interesting that the young man shows up and I think his very, very nice, large, mature trees are also hacked down indiscriminately. No red X on it, a month or two or three in advance, no council meeting about it. Then when I questioned the council people, they kinda said, you know, I said, no, I don't think it, I don't think that project ever went to council vote. Like, I'm, I'm getting reminded of how things go, appropriations this, projects this, all aye, all any nays, and aye, you know? So, now I'm getting reminded, yeah, I'm here too late. Maybe. After what the young man here said, maybe I'm not. We have on, on, on my block of Torrance, and the, and the next block north, and then I guess it skips his block, and it goes to the next block north, seven years ago, I guess it was. We always have to deal with these construction projects. On Chicago Road, we just had it done, on Torrance, four blocks of Torrance, except his little part, was done completely. And we had nice, narrow, one-way roads with a nice, large, green space in between them. I guess green is the catchword, but I think, uh, what I'm seeing going on is happening to be counterintuitive. Not very green to hack down forty or fifty trees in an afternoon. Especially the ones that are ten years old, that are just getting a canopy to them, and then the ones that are very healthy, forty and fifty and sixty years old, that are actual shade trees for his neighborhood. And trees that clean the air for my neighborhood. And I have a two-way, one-way streets in two directions, what they call a parkway in the middle, and it used to be about, uh, 40 to 50 feet of grass with a lot of old growth trees, those had to come down when we got new sores and water. Oh, oh, well. Then they planted the new ones, they put up the nice high streetlights, and everyone's happy, or indifferent, I would say. And when I reached out to the neighbors, who are, a lot of them were out there watching these trees cut down, looked like they were a little bit in shock, too. What's going on here? When I heard about the bike path, uh, from one of my neighbors, they didn't want it at all. They thought it would be inviting some riffraff, perhaps. They just didn't want it. It's not necessary. We talked about it amongst our neighbors, amongst ourselves. I, I was indifferent, I'm too busy to show. I, you know, I work like he does, like most people do. I, I have to work, I count on you people to be watching out to make sure dumb stuff isn't being done. Now, when I found out that this project that I'm referring to, that goes on for four blocks, you know, when I heard about it a few months ago, I thought, okay, all right, big time, I kind of hushed my neighbor down a little bit, I said, "It'll be okay. They're gonna come by, they're gonna meander around in between the trees and lampposts with a, with a, with some pavement, big deal. There'd be no bikes anyway, 'cause there's no bikes traveling that direction anyway." Maybe one a day to a day a kid or something in the neighborhood, but most of the pedestrian bicycle traffic goes down Chicago Road from east to west. You always see walkers and bikers east to west on the truck, on the Chicago Road. You don't see, all I see going down my street is people trying to bypass Calumet and speeding. Now, if it was up to me, and I recommend this to my neighbor, who, we debate these things amongst ourselves, I'd say, "Now, I'd like to see a cul-de-sac there and some speed bumps," you know, either and/or. Ah, no way, no cul-de-sac, so, you know, no speed bumps, no, we don't need that, but people do, they clip by about 45, 40, 45, that's a speedway down Torrance, at least down my block. Uh, but the road, if they, you gotta realize, there's a difference between a bike path or a bicycle superhighway, which seems to be being built, and there's a difference between a paved path and a route. A bike route, you got a wide enough one-way streets, you put up some signs with some markings saying bike route number three, you know, bike route number blue, or whatever you call it. And we have plenty of room, if you look at it, on Torrance, both one-way streets in either direction, except for his, that wasn't fixed, but apparently the money's going towards some kind of over-engineered bike path, rather than fixing this gentleman's little section of street. So how'd that happen? Like I said, I'm here, I count on you people, all he is, and the mayor, who didn't return my call, by the way. These four did, more than once. I count on you people to make sure that the city doesn't do dumb stuff, and that spends the money where it needs to be spent. And when I heard, "Oh, this, this money might have come from the mayor's, uh, special project, it doesn't go through council approval." Is that true? Well, you can't respond now, but maybe we'll find out later. If it didn't, we got another problem, even bigger than this bike path debacle, even bigger than his, because if the mayor's getting special money from some donors or corporate people who we don't know about, who is he beholden to? And for what reasons down the road? Is, are these people donating money to the mayor for beautification? It looks good. It looks good on paper, it makes for good publicity, but you always gotta be skeptical when you're taking money from some unknown sources. Who are these people that the mayor's getting this special project money from? And all you that are sitting in these seats, I expect you all to be finding out, and I think the people of Hammond would like to know, that even care to know.
Thank you.
I don't want the bike path, I don't think a lot of other people on my block do.
Thank you, Mr. Marsiniak. We have three minutes, and you've been on 15 minutes already.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion to go back to regular order of business.
Anybody else want to speak on public expression? Okay, public expression's over. Chair would entertain a motion by Councilman Higgs to go back to regular order, to regular order of business, or new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business, there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Lack of a second? Next item, and I know our city engineer's sitting out there, so we didn't go back to new and unfinished business, so you're not gonna be able to go ahead and speak to any of these gentlemen's problems here. So the next item of business is, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn from this lovely meeting.
By Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.